Yeah, yeah, you're gonna go with that.
Alright, I'm gonna get started.
Bogans? Eight bogans? Ain't nothing wrong with that. Do you need somebody to turn that on for you?
No, that's already on. We're starting to get started.
It's by southern, okay?
Yeah.
Galatians.
Hell, I've been rusty, we haven't done this for two weeks. Alright. Since we missed a week and some people missed the lesson before that, I'm just gonna do a brief review. And Revelation eleven and twelve, which we're gonna cover today, kinda, it kinda fills in information that is already going on, that we've already learned about in some of the previous chapters. Our Revelation eleven, twelve, and thirteen are filling in details of the timeline we have already covered. And the seals one through, one through four, which I called the beginning of sorrows, because that's what Jesus calls it in Matthew twenty-four. Some of the things we see are false teachers deceive many, wars and rumors of wars, nation against nation, kingdoms against kingdoms, famines, pestilences, and earthquakes in various places. The great tribulation, the Antichrist will stand in the temple of God declaring to be God and demanding to be worshiped. People will hate each other and betray each other, Christians will be martyred, more false prophets and teachers will come. And in the same verse, Christians are called to endure to the end. It also tells us the gospel will be preached in all the world, and then the end will come. And the great tribulation, it says, these days will be shortened for the Christians' sake. It also says more false Christ and false prophets with great signs and wonders to deceive, possibly even the elect will come on the scene. And it says Jesus will come like lightning from the east to the west. And the sixth seal, which I've told everybody I believe is when the rapture happens. The sun is darkened, the moon will not give its light, stars will fall from heaven, tribes will mourn. The son of man is coming on the clouds of heaven with power and great glory. Angels sound trumpets, they gather Christians, the rapture. Revelation eleven, before we get there, I wanted to also touch on what, uh, um, the apostle Paul said, some of the points he said in Second Thessalonians, which go along with these same passages. He said there would be a great falling away in apostasy. He also says the Antichrist sits in the temple demanding worship, and he's also gonna set up his image to be worshiped. And any, the scripture tells us that anybody that doesn't worship the image will be killed. I argue that when they say the restrainer will be removed, that is actually not the Holy Spirit, that's Michael, some people believe it's the Holy Spirit. I myself do not. Satan through the Antichrist will deceive many, we're gonna find out in Revelation twelve, Satan's gonna be kicked out of heaven by Michael and the good angels. And then he's gonna come in, this is gonna be the midway through the seventieth week of Daniel, and he's gonna inter-possess the Antichrist, similar to what he did with Judas when he betrayed the Lord. But he will no longer have access to heaven, because even now Satan still has access to heaven, because he accuses the brother into the Lord, and we see that in the book of Job, when he talks to the Lord about tempting Job. So he still currently has that access, but here in this Revelation twelve, when we read about it, that's when that access will end. And it also says, some people say there's gonna be a, uh, great revival during the seventieth week of Daniel, but I think that goes against scripture, because the apostle Paul says that people that reject salvation message before this time period, they're gonna be sent a strong delusion, and they're gonna believe the lie. So if there's gonna be a great revival, then that's contradictory to the word of God, and I can't see that it happens that way. I know there's gonna be a hundred and forty-four thousand sealed from Israel, and that Israel's gonna be protected for three and a half years from the Antichrist, but I don't see a, uh, great revival during this period. I, and in the timeline that I believe, which you've seen on the graphs, I believe that the first four seals are called the beginning of sorrows, and then I believe the last three and a half, which that's three and a half years. And I believe the last three and a half years is what I call the great tribulation, and then God's wrath, which I believe starts. It gives us a picture at the sixth seal, that God's wrath is coming, and then I believe it actually, there's a pause at the seventh seal. And then we go into the seven trumpets, and then the seven bowls, and I believe all that is God's wrath. Okay, Revelation eleven, the two witnesses. Well, before we read about the two witnesses, let's talk about, there's theories about who the two witnesses can be, and the main ones I hear are Elijah, Moses, Enoch. Or there's also a theory that it can be heavenly beings, like we've seen in chapters four and five in the throne room. And, but I'm gonna go in, I'm gonna read the scripture, and then I'm gonna go in and show you some of the scriptures about some of these people. And let the Holy Spirit teach you who it may be or may not be. The two witnesses, starting at verse one, this is Revelation eleven and verse one. "And I was given a reed like a measuring rod, and the angel stood saying, rise and measure the temple of God, the altar, and those who worship there, but leave out the court, which is outside the temple, and do not measure it, for it has been given to the Gentiles, and they will tread the holy city underfoot for forty-two months. And I will give power to my two witnesses, and they will prophecy one thousand two hundred and sixty days clothed in satin cloth." So right there, forty-two months and one thousand two hundred and sixty days, those are both equal three and a half years. It's just a different way of saying it. It's all a three and a half year time period. And I believe this all takes place at the same time that the Antichrist stands up in the temple and declares to be God. I believe that is the forty-two months that a lot of this is talking about. Verse four, "There are two olive trees and two lampstands standing before the God of the earth, and if anyone wants to harm them, fire proceeds from their mouth and devours their enemies. And if anyone wants to harm them, he must be killed in this manner. These have power to shut heaven, so that no rain falls in the days of their prophecy, and they have power over waters to turn them to blood, and to strike the earth with all plagues as often as they desire." So here we see that the witnesses are gonna be able to do miracles. And when I talk about some of these other people, we're gonna see that they were able to do miracles similar to these. The witnesses killed, verse seven, "When they finish their testimony, the beast that ascends out of the bottomless pit will make war against them, overcome them, and kill them. And their dead bodies will lie in the streets of the great city, which spiritually is called Sodom and Egypt, where also our Lord was crucified. Then those from the peoples, tribes, tongues, and nations will see their dead bodies three and a half days, and not allow their dead bodies to be put into graves. And those who dwell on the earth will rejoice over them, make merry, and send gifts to one another, because these two prophets tormented those who dwell on the earth." So here we see that basically for the time appointed by God, these two men, these witnesses, are basically invincible, nobody is able to kill them, and uh, anybody that tries to harm them or do anything, it comes back to them, and it ends up being their death. But we do see that that, that protection is gonna end eventually. And we see that they are killed, and then they lay in the streets for three and a half days, and then they're resurrected again. But while they're dead, we see that the evil wicked people that are on the earth are basically claiming this as a holiday, because it says they're giving presents to one another and celebrating it, and so that's how wicked the world is during this time period. And I also believe, by my belief that we're raptured at the sixth seal, I also believe, and I don't believe a lot of people were saved, because I believe it's impossible, if you rejected Jesus before the rapture, I don't think you're gonna get a second chance, and I think we see an example of that, when a person dies, they have till, as long as they live, to accept Jesus as their Lord. But once they die and go into eternity, that chance is over. And I, I, I think it's the same thing here, I do believe that, uh, Israel will have that opportunity, because they don't believe Jesus is the Messiah. I also believe that the hundred and forty-four thousand are sealed by God, it says that. It also says that, there's passages, uh, I think it's in Corinthians, it also says Christians are sealed by God as well, so there's a pattern that God seals his people, and, uh, it's also, the Antichrist will do a counterfeit of that, when he requires people to receive the mark, that'll be his seal. Because Satan always tries to counterfeit and copy what, what God does.
Steve?
Yeah.
What about the ones that, after the rapture, that are martyred, that accept Jesus? It talks about the martyrs, they'll be beheaded if they don't take the martyr.
I believe that there's, they, some people say those are tribulation saints. But I don't believe anywhere in scripture it says there's a tribulation saint. I think those saints are the same saints there's been for two thousand years. So those are gonna, there's gonna be a remnant of Christians that have to die for their faith. But we also see that there's, not all of them are gonna die, because people are gonna be changed at the rapture. But it's no different than right now, like we've talked about this whole lesson when it started, we went through all the Christian martyrs for the last two thousand years. All the apostles that were murdered, and it's still gonna be going on during the seventieth week of Daniel. I don't believe the- I don't believe the scripture says that, that there's a tribulation saint, as far as that being a different believer than what there is right now. I think that's a man-made thing, but- But I also told you that I, a lot of people believe in the imminent return of Christ, which I don't, because the apostles didn't believe that. If they believed it, why would they say that they knew their, remember Peter said that the Lord told him how he was gonna die? And Paul has the verse that he said he run the race, finished the fight, so he knew he was dying for the Lord. He didn't think that he was gonna get raptured before that, so how could we say that people actually believed that back then? That he could come at any moment if they knew their death was gonna happen first? And Jesus himself also told them that the end would come until the gospel was preached in all the world. And they had, when, a lot of them were martyred, they had only been preaching the gospel for around fifty years or less. And as big as the world is, I mean, it's a lot bigger today than it was then, but they were nowhere near fulfilling the Great Commission in their lifetimes. So I don't know how people could say that he could come at any moment if he said that he wouldn't come until the gospel was preached in all the world. That's a conflict of scripture, and God's not a liar. Satan's the author of confusion. So, and I know that's not a popular teaching, but it's what I honestly believe the Bible says, and so that's what I'm gonna teach. But I also told you guys at the beginning of this lesson, if you believe differently, differently than me, that's fine, as long as you believe in Jesus as your Savior, because more important than when the rapture's gonna occur is the gospel and the good news, and leading people to Christ. And I think a lot of fights happens because of this, and that wasn't in what God intended, but he also says twice in the book of Revelation, if you read it, you'll be blessed. So he thinks it's important enough for us to study and learn and know what he's saying.
Amen.
And almost a third, about twenty-eight or twenty-nine percent, so almost a third of the Bible is Bible prophecy, or it was at the time it was written. And some has since been fulfilled, but, I mean, if almost a third of the Bible is Bible prophecy, then it's something God wants us to know. And I'm not here to cause confliction with your belief or argument with you, that's not any of my brothers and sisters that know the Lord, whatever they believe. I mean, if that's what the Holy Spirit's taught you, then it's not about that, it's about salvation. But I honestly believe in my heart, because I believe pre-tribulation rapture for about twenty-two years of my life. And it was based on what preachers had taught me, and what I read in books, and the movies I watched. And then there's a funny thing, in the nineties, my grandpa, who passed away, and we just had his auction, uh, for my grandma this past, uh, week, she died about nine months ago, well, he died in two thousand eight. Well, in the nineties, he gave me a book. And it was basically like, I guess back then you would call it mid-tribulation, but I believed pre-tribulation back then, so I read the whole book in the nineties, but I basically just, I dismissed it. But here, in probably about the last eight years, the Lord really woke me up to prophecy and the things that were going on. And I really started studying and getting interested in it, and, because I felt the time was growing short, I just felt something in my spirit that was telling me we're getting close to the time, and so I believed pre-trib then, so I believed it could happen at any moment then. But something happened about, it's been less than a year ago. I was going through the garage and going through stuff, and the book that my grandpa gave me in the nineties, I found in a box. And there's no way I could really have that book, because you all know that I was married before and I was divorced, well, that book didn't come with me when I left. So somehow that book got in a box in my garage, and I was able to find it, to read it. And it changed my mind, it had all the scriptures that went against everything I have been taught, and I went and studied those specific scriptures. I didn't read any pre-trib, I didn't read any mid-trib, I didn't read any post-trib, I just wanted to read God's word and pray, and have Him teach me what it said, and I came out believing. It doesn't really have a title, but it's similar to the pre-wrath version, but I wouldn't call it that. I would call it what I feel that the apostles in the first century church believed, and I get it from John, Paul, Mark, Matthew, when it talks about it, it all ties them together, and some of the old prophets. And it led me to believe that the rapture occurs at the sixth seal. But, um, and the other funny thing is, I try to be fair with all the beliefs, so I went and watched some teachers online, and I can't remember that one guy. But he, he was a pre-tribulation rapture guy, and he said he didn't wanna give, he was basically talking about pre-wrath and mid-trib. I think it was more toward pre-wrath, he was kinda making fun of it, because he's like, well, it's actually the three-quarter wrath rapture, because that's when they think it's gonna happen. But he was like kinda smirky about it, and smart about it, and then he's like, I'm not gonna give those people a platform. And then he spent seven one-hour sessions about the pre-tribulation, or the pre-wrath rapture, trying to disprove it. And he didn't use any scripture at all, it was just opinion and what some other person with a doctorate said about it. And then also trying to prove his pre-tribulation rapture, he didn't use any scripture to back that up either. And I just thought that was very weird, that somebody would take seven hours of their platform to talk about something that you didn't wanna give a platform to. And that you're also not open to anybody else's opinion when it's not a salvation issue, where I myself am. If you can show me in the scripture to prove the pre-tribulation rapture by the verses, and it actually means that, it's not just some verse that you're taking out of context to try to convince me of that, I would be happy to hear it. But I know it doesn't exist, because I used to believe that way, and the word of God changed my mind about it. But like I said, if you believe that way, which I know some of you do, I still love you, you're still my brothers and sisters, it doesn't have anything to do with the Lord Jesus Christ. But I do think God wants us to know the truth of what he says, because he's not the author of confusion, we know that's Satan. And he's really put this on my heart for several months now to preach this message. And he made me come back to this and review it, because I think it's such an important part to teach you. And I know I've gotten some persecution for it, because I teach this way. And that in and of itself, I don't think is very Christian, because I don't feel that way about the other person that believes that way. Because if Jesus can die on the cross for me, then I love that person, and but I think that's just something to me, that just confirms to me that why somebody would be that, I don't know what the word would be, but that critical and that defensive about a position that somebody else has on something. I just think that, that totally confirms to me that their position isn't right when somebody does that, so. But like I said, I would be happy to hear the verses that confirm that. Okay, we talked about, uh, the witnesses resurrected, "Now after three and a half days, the breath of life from God entered them, and they stood on their feet, and great fear fell on those who saw them, and they heard a loud voice from heaven saying to them, 'Come up here,' and they ascended to heaven in a cloud, and their enemies saw them, and the same hour there was a great earthquake, and a tenth of the city fell, and the earthquake, seven thousand people were killed, and the rest were afraid and gave glory to God of heaven. The second woe is past, behold, the third woe is coming quickly." So we see in the end, even though that they threw a party and gave presents, because the witnesses were dead, God turned it for good and resurrected them, and it says the rest were afraid and gave glory to God of heaven, so that, that's just an example of why God allows the tribulation for his glory and his good. We don't know at the times when we go through that, but it's for God's glory, he's got a plan that we don't understand, and it's gonna be made for good to glorify him, and whatever, we just gotta remain faithful through it, just like Job. Job went through everything, and he was faithful through it all, so. Um, "The seventh trumpet, the kingdom proclaimed. Then the seventh angel sounded, and there were loud voices in heaven, saying, 'The kingdoms of this world have become the kingdoms of our Lord and of his Christ, and he shall reign forever and ever.'"
Sorry.
That's alright.
He has spoken.
I guess.
God spoke from heaven.
He spoke from somewhere.
"And the twenty-four elders who sat before God on their thrones fell on their faces and worshiped God, saying, 'We give you thanks, O Lord, God Almighty, the one who is and who was, and who is to come, because you have taken your great power and reign.' The nations were angry, and your wrath has come, and the time of the dead, that they should be judged, and that you should reward your servants, the prophets, and the saints, and those who fear your name, small and great, and you should destroy those who destroy the earth.'" So right here, I believe, most of us know what the beam of seed of Christ is, and there are several verses in scripture, um, in Paul's letters and other places, that tell us that you will receive crowns or rewards for the work you do for the kingdom. And I believe this verse is referring to that, in the timeline of the book of Revelation. This is where Christians are gonna be in heaven at the judgment seat, receiving their word, their rewards for what they did or didn't do for the kingdom. And works isn't a salvation issue, but it'll have to do with your standing in heaven for what you did do for the Lord. Some people are gonna smell like smoke when they get there, and they're gonna make it in there, but their works are all gonna burned up, be burned up, because they didn't do anything for God's kingdom. But I honestly believe with all my heart that if you accept Jesus as your Lord and Savior, you're going to heaven regardless of any work you do or don't do, that. But I don't wanna get there smelling like smoke and not having anything to give back to Jesus either, at the same time, but- Yeah, I think there's gonna be a lot of people there that you never thought would be there. Example would be the thief on the cross, lived a whole life of wickedness pretty much, and at his dying breath passed Jesus into his heart, and got to go to, got his ticket for eternity, just right there proves that your works don't mean anything for, as far as salvation, so.
Way beyond our understanding.
Yep. And he loves us and died for us, even, and none of us deserve it, but he did it anyways. Uh, verse nineteen, "Then the temple of God was opened in heaven, and the ark of his covenant was seen in his temple, and there were lightnings, noises, thunderings, and an earthquake, and great hell." And it also says back here that, um, when it talks about his wrath coming, and it said, this is actually when it says, basically that the kingdom is starting to come into play. The wicked world is dying, sinful world is dying, and the kingdom is actually starting to come into play here in these verses. It's just hasn't got down to the earth yet. And then here's a picture of, like, all the times, well, I didn't all the times, but it's several times that it talks about three and a half years in chapters eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Forty-two months, that's three and a half years, it says they'll trip the holy city for forty-two months in Revelation eleven two. Twelve hundred and sixty days, that's three and a half years, and Revelation three eleven, that's how long the witnesses prophesied in the streets. Twelve hundred and sixty days, Revelation twelve six, that's how long that Israel is gonna be protected in the wilderness. Times, times, and half a time is three and a half years. And that's Revelation twelve, which is, talks about um, the woman being taken away to the wilderness and being protected for three and a half years, and the woman represents Israel. And then forty-two months here is three and a half years, and it talks about the beast exercising authority for forty-two months, allowed to make war on the saints and to conquer them. So all these are talking about the same time period, the three and a half year time period, which is after the Antichrist stands on the temple, that's the midpoint of the seventieth, seventieth week of Daniel, which is a seven-year period. And once he stands up in the temple, that's halfway, and then all these other things happen in the second half. Okay, Revelation twelve, but before we get that, I told you that I was gonna talk about the possible people who could, the witnesses might possibly be. And, uh, Enoch is one. And the only time we really read about Enoch is in Genesis five, and it's only twenty-one through twenty-four. And I was just gonna read that real briefly. Genesis five, twenty-one through twenty-four, tells us about Enoch. Says Enoch lived sixty-five years and begat Methuselah, which Methus, Methuselah is, uh, Noah's, um, is it his grand, grandfather? It's either his grandfather or-
Great-grand, great-grandfather.
Yeah, so, so we know what line that he comes from. So after he, oh, it might even tell us here. "After he begat Methuselah, Enoch walked with God three hundred years and had sons and daughters." So all the days of Enoch were three hundred and sixty-five years, and Enoch walked with God, and he was not, for God took him. So he, so he walked with God for three hundred and sixty-five years, and then he wasn't anymore, which is a form of a rapture. So that's one of the reasons why they think Enoch might be one of the witnesses, because he never, never tasted death. And then they taste death when they lay in the streets for three and a half days, which is possible, I don't know, the scripture doesn't say black or white who it is, but I'm just giving you the possibilities. But as far as Enoch, that's the only thing I see in the scripture about him. And Elijah also had a rapture experience, he was taken up in a whirlwind, and it doesn't ever tell us that he died. So that's where he comes from, and in my mind, if it's a human being, Elijah is definitely one of them, because he also was in the transfiguration with Moses, so I think Elijah, if it's a human, is definitely one of the two witnesses. And then Jude, chapter one, fourteen, and sixteen, you can read, I'm not gonna read the scripture, but it talks about Satan and arguing with Michael about Moses's bones. And I don't know what that really has to do with, but some people sit, point to that, and the transfiguration is why Moses might be one of the two witnesses. Point to that and the transfiguration is why Moses might be one of the two witnesses. But we know Moses died because he wouldn't be bones if he didn't die, so. I don't know. But he also was in the transfiguration with Christ and um Elijah. Which a lot of people point to that as the two witnesses. Also, I got some, when it when it, we read the scripture in chapter eleven, when it talked about what the two witnesses could do, they could basically do. Mi- miracles, they could do plagues. They could stop the rain, all these type of things, they were protected. Divinely from death and. Whatever manner of death people tried to kill them with, they were killed by, the scripture told us. So but these are some of the things in Exodus, it tells us about Moses. And most of us know the story of Moses and that and. The ten plagues that God put on Egypt. When Moses was telling him what God told him to say from the Lord and. I wrote those down, the water became blood. Uh the second one was frogs. The third one was lice. The fourth one was flies. The fifth one livestock diseased, the sixth one boils. The seventh one hail. The eighth one locusts. The ninth darkness and the tenth death of the firstborn. And the other thing that. Kinda could lead toward Moses cuz these were all the things that God did under Moses's time. You see a lot of these in the book of Revelation. You see pestilences, which could be lice, flies, frogs, disease. Livestock disease, we see that there's famines. Um later on in the book of Revelation, we re- read that the wicked people received boils on their bodies, so. There's boils, there's also locuses in the book of Revelation. Um darkness, there's a lot of times in the book of Revelation that talks about darkness, the sun and the moon and the stars being darkened and. Demned. The water became blood. That's talked about in the book of Revelation. So there's a lot of things that could point to Moses as being one of these witnesses too cuz a lot of things. During his life are happening again in the book of Revelation. But that stuff is in Exodus and it talks about some of those things in Exodus seven, chapter seven through eleven, if you. Wanna do that in your own time, look that up. And then in King, first Kings seventeen through nineteen and second Kings one and two. We read about Elijah and Elijah was able to do miracles too, he was able to. Say a blessing on the story of, I don't remember that if it even said the lady's name, but. He was able to keep the flour and the oil going. To keep making the food that they were able to eat, it never ran out, he was able to do that miracle. And then later on in that chapter, he was able to raise uh the dead, uh one of the. Lady's sons died and he was able to resurrect him through. Praying to God and his uh miracles, he was also um. In second Kings, chapter two, it also talks about when he was taken to heaven in a whirlwind, which is a rapture type cuz. It doesn't talk about him again after that, that he died anywhere, so. So there's some similarities about both of those, he can shut the heavens and stop the rain. In first Kings, chapter seventeen, and that's one of the things the witnesses are gonna be able to do in chapter eleven, so. I mean, I think there's a pretty good arguments of. A lot of these things of who these people could be. And I'm gonna read you Matthew seventeen, that talks about, there's many verses that talk about it, Mark nine, two and eight, Luke nine. Twenty-eight and thirty-six, but I'm just gonna read it from Matthew seventeen, it talks about the transfiguration. Matthew seventeen, one through eight. Matthew seventeen, verse one. Now after six days, Jesus took Peter, James and John his brother. Led them up on a high mountain by themselves. And he was transfigured before them. His face shone like the sun and his clothes became as white as the light. And behold, Moses and Elijah appeared to them, talking with him. Then Peter answered and said to Jesus, Lord, it is good for us to be here if you wish. Let us make here three tabernacles, one for you, one for Moses and one for Elijah. While he was still speaking, behold, a bright cloud overshadowed them and suddenly a voice came out of the cloud. Saying, this is my beloved son, and whom I am well pleased, hear him. And when the disciples heard it, they. Fell on their faces and were greatly afraid. But Jesus came and touched them and said, arise and do not be afraid. When he, when they had lifted up their eyes, they saw no one but Jesus only. So a lot of people use that passage to say that those two might be on the witnesses in chapter eleven. There's also one more possibility of who the witnesses may be. And that's found in Zechariah, chapter four. And this kinda goes along with what we read in uh. Four, Revelation four and five. When it showed like some of the heavenly beings. But Zechariah four, chapter one, it says. Now the angel who talked with me came back and wakened me. As a man who is wakened out of his sleep. And he said to me, what do you see? So I said, I am looking and there is a lampstand of solid gold with a bull on top of it. And on the stand, seven lamps. With seven pipes to the seven lamps. Two olive trees are by it. One at the right of the bull and the other at the left. So I answered and spoke to the angel who talked with me, saying, what are these? My lord. Then the angel who talked with me answered and said to me. Do you not know what these are? And I said, no, my lord, so he answered and said to me. This is the word of the Lord. To Zerubabel. Not by might nor by power, but by my spirit, says the Lord of hosts, who are you, oh great mountain? Before Zerubabel, you shall become a plain and he shall bring forth. The capstone. With sheltered grace, grace to it. Moreover, the word of the Lord came to me, saying, the hands of Zerubabel. Have laid the foundation of this temple, his hand shall also finish it. Then you will know that the Lord of hosts has sent me to you. For who has despised the day of small things? For these seven rejoice to see the plum line in the hand of Zerubabel. They are the eyes of the Lord, would scan to and fro throughout the whole earth. Then I answered and said to him, what are these two olive trees? At the right of the lampstand and at its left. And I further answered and said to him. What are these two olive branches that drip into the receptacles of the two gold pipes? From which the golden oil drains. Then he answered me and said, do you not know what these are? And I said, no, my lord, so he said, these are.